There it is.
Recording.
I actually. He is.
He has a new version.
Yeah, I hear.
What are you call?
You're going to craft you the papers.
I'm done.
Have a good evening.
Oh. I'm four by two. Check, check.
Yeah. Yeah, there we go. I'll just watch them. Oh. No. Flashing along very. The bolt, just not paying off as the bolt. Yeah. Yeah, they're great with duty.
She might be casting.
People have been well. But no, most of reality. So. Not. We've been freezing.
We're reaching. I'm excited we need to tell all of you.
Maybe some work. Definitely speaking. It's going into the box. So. I heard. It's like so this. You do it in a sort of the year, sort of the year that happens. That long. Enough, let's do it. Second. I'm also.
I'm gonna. Good job Travis.
Here we are.
Whatever gets the job done.
Any one is uh so say the word will call our zone of the year to see where. Who's doing the usual question? I pledge allegiance to the law. And that is the right. It's a problem. It's fans. I'm an issue. I'm a problem. If it's just one. The rest of you guys. You grab some pretty easy in that. Except. Do you think we have our open forum and public comment? So. If please approach the microphone, here's your name or address. Um. That's. You know, anything like zero. Alright, so good, everything's good. Uh, I know some of you, you have some variances in front of the council tonight and you don't have that opportunity to speak on those days. This time we have uh our presentation of our twenty, we are going to be free audit presentation uh by.
The same example, audit part. Very crudely solved. The town received an unclassified and that is the best type of opinion. During the year, the general fund balance increased eight hundred fifty thousand to one point nine. At the end of the year, there was another revenue of one point five million. And that relates to our code funds that were advanced that did not get spent. Can we just recommend that you continue to monitor those funds? Does they need to be obligated by December of the first twenty four? And then spent by the end of twenty twenty six? There were one hundred and ninety four thousand of payments on existing debt so paying down your all term liabilities. And there was one new accounting standard in effect for the year. And that requires you to capitalize in long terms subscription agreements. You have a six year subscription, so you're capitalizing the six year cost as an asset that's offset by a liability. Which just changes the rules on your balance sheet, but you continue to recognize expense with you. Looking at the general fund balance over the past five years. We can see that in twenty twenty three, the balance has increased. And at the end of twenty twenty three, there was one point three million in unassigned fund balance. And that's that now it doesn't have any internal or external restriction on it. So it can be spent at the house refreshment. Looking at twenty twenty, there's that large restricted balance. And that relates to the loan proceeds that you received on that avenue facility that hadn't been spent. So in twenty twenty, you have a large fund balance and then those that are spent down in twenty twenty two. And looking at the general fund revenues and expenditures of the past five years. In twenty twenty three, revenues exceeded expenditures, which allowed you to add to fund balance. Which was contrast to last year where her expenses were greater than revenues, so you could use some of your own balance since twenty twenty two. Looking at our audit reports, the town was in compliance with the laws and regulations invested. We did have a few initial comments this year. The first one regarding controls over the preparation of financial statements. That's a common one for small governments and we had it for the past few years. Just as part of our audit, we tend to coach more companies and help with some of those adjustments for those large unusual accounting item. So we just recommend this staff needs to obtain more training to potentially eliminate some of those adjustments. We can also recommend that you review your purchasing policy for some of your quotes and brush up for bids. Some of our tests and it was unclear if you were following exactly what your purchasing policy said. It looked like those purchases, they come before cancel for cripples, so you can have any. Questions on the legitimacy of those expenses, whether or not they followed the purchasing policy as stated. The other comment is the city of Florida requires the city to obtain eight hours of investment training each year. And just with the turnover and finance. That documentation wasn't. So we recommend that that's something you do each year. In our separate letters and board just summarize this is the audit procedures. Never no additional issues or anything should close that letter. If there are any comments that anyone can have you to address them.
Yeah, one hundred forty four thousand is just your commitment to the three six product labs, which is the P D software. So since we have an agreement for a six year term, I think there's what, three years left for the. Um, we have to account for that and as to the one forty four comes in.
Council, any questions for staff or others? Very, very much. You appreciate that all your services have been answered and thank all of staff. All our work they do to make sure that we stay in our as in our consumers.
If you want to recognize Derek and Teresa for our audience tonight, our finance director and finance clerk.
We mean we have two class. They said we have our presentation, say the dates by. Amy Giannotti, I was um. Amy.
Hi, thank you guys. Um. The next presentation will include an introduction of the new lake management consultant, another group of um sorry, the new place manager contractor, sorry. Another view of my findings, a summary of the restoration projects, areas that are to wait for improvement, and different suggestions for ways that the community can help. Um, for those who don't know me, my name is Amy Giannotti, and I've been working here in the town of Wintermere for. Hmm. We get a. Um, for the past couple of years. Um, I'm an environmental scientist and certified lake manager based out of North Park. And my job is to provide technical consulting recommendations for winter's lakes and stormwater management. I have over twenty years' experience managing water resources in Florida, including higher employment with several state agencies and local governments. And I currently own my own consulting company. My clients include municipalities, HOAs, waterfront residents. And I have an undergraduate degree in biology from Mariana College in Ohio and a master's degree in environmental sciences for the University of Virginia. The lakes surrounding the town of Wintermere are some of the most picturesque in central Florida. Lake Butler and Down are part of the Butler chain of lakes, which includes five thousand acres of surface water and thirteen lakes connected by Hannibal canals. These lakes, as well as Lakes Bessie and Crescent, are part of the Wintermere Water Navigation Control District. With funding provided by an M S T U, which is managed by Orange County. And management efforts are coordinated by the Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board. The Butler Chain of Lakes is considered an outstanding Florida waterway or O F W. And that's designated by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection in nineteen eighty seven. And as such, these waters are afforded extra environmental protections because of some of their unique natural attributes. The town of Wintermere is responsible for managing the following shorelines, which are city owned. In accordance with the permit conditions outlined by the Florida Division Wildlife Conservation Commission's invasive plant management section. And Orange County's Environmental Protection Division. So there are two sites on Lake Butler at Ferwood Park and a shoreline at Palmer Park. One site on Lake Bessie, Lake Bessie Shoreline Park. Three sites on Lake Down encompassing Lake Street Park, Lake Down Park, and East Fourth Avenue. And then one site on Lake Crescent, the Wintermere Recreation Center and the canal. These waterfront sites are currently under contract for treatment with aquatic weed control, which is a new contractor for the town. Um, they're doing an excellent job and Wintermere's retention pond at Hookdale and East Avenue was also part of the berm and swale retention ditch manager program that we look over. The town also owns Johnson Park and Lake Bessie and monitor this for treatment as needed. Um, management efforts for invasive aquatic plants are shared by the town and by the Florida Division Wildlife Conservation Commission. Depending upon the lake and upon the plant species that are present. Some of those are included under the state's funded work planet program. And that work is then conducted under contract by Orange County P D. So, whoops, we'll go back on the way to Bessie. Thank you. Lake Bessie was needed for invasive aquatic and has the plants in the site was recently replanting with five hundred and four bear root species of figgerweed, club rush, golden cannon, blue flag iris, and duck potato. These are native aquatic plants. And the area above the normal high water elevation was restored with six hundred and sixty feet uh plants of native species to include sawgrass, backhatchy grass, and core grass. This area should fill in nicely and routine maintenance will continue to prevent exotic species from establishing. And next is Lake Butler and Palmer Park. This area had a lot of uh native vegetation present, but it is densely mixed with torpedo grass, human bull rush, et cetera. So that area has been restored and is under ongoing maintenance as well. This is the area around a little pedestrian knock and a small sliver sort of across the the water um on the end of that. Looks like a little island there that's also part of the town. This site was revegetated um with four hundred and two native aquatic plants, including figgerweed, duck potato, club rush, blue frag, blue flag iris, and golden cannon. And recurring seeds of weed seems to be a challenging species that we are continuing to monitor and treat here. Aquatic weed control is doing a really good job with that. So far, they've removed some campers, some Indian, Cuban bull rush. Might see hydrola and lark eyes in there too, but those are under the um state work planet program that's treated by Orange County. So I I do monitor all of that and survey and communicate with the responsible entity whoever's in charge of the management. Uh, no need to lay down, just there got the name. There we go. Um, four hundred and eighty, four hundred and thirty two native plants which later were addition here, including figgerweed, golden cannon, club rush, duck potato, blue flag iris. The required side, they're your native species. Um, aquatic weed control that there would wild taro, primrose willow, Chinese hallow, and cubicle rush. So that photo there is on the right is um was just taken about ten days ago. And they were out there today and I saw them are native native aquatic plants and yesterday too. It is complete. And. We're not kidding when we say it takes a village. Uh, we regularly coordinate with Orange County's lakes team, F L C's regional biologists, F L C and Orange County um Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement and the town's other contractors. Aquatic weed control is the managing waterfronts and they've been doing a really great job dealing with the aftermath of the twenty twenty two hurricanes. That hasn't been easy. Uh, they are contracted for settling municipalities, including Orange County, so they are used to working within the government sector. The next slide includes some of our challenges and goals we're still dealing with, as you guys probably know. Um, hurricane damage from the fall of twenty twenty two. For a while, the water was too high and the county had the lakes closed, so even our contractor couldn't access for proper treatment. Um, planned additions include public signage to help people understand uh habitat preservation and water quality. And we always try to emphasize management practices for residents in the community. Things like eating grass clippings, painting in your yard, away from the water, away from the streets. Bag that at the yard base or put it back in the flower beds, that's natural fertilizer. Pet waste should always be collected back in places of trash. Vehicles should be washed on the lawn or they should be taken to a um to a car wash, uh certified car wash place. To capture that wrong. Uh, and so we, I think that John of Wintermere does a really nice job with emphasis on outreach, which to me, you can't put a price, but that's. Um, the most important thing. Next up. For the watershed and lake cleanups, um, we have a couple of, one of those spent in the spring, the date that we announced very shortly. Um, Wintermere did participate in the takeover of the trail state where we spent a an entire day in uh Oakland. Educating people about what Wintermere's natural resources are and what we do to protect them. Wintermere also has a pretty active social media presence in terms of lake management and environmental protection and we're also articles that are appearing with the set. Give me more information. And then lastly, uh, we always ask how can we help from residents, which is great. Um, there are many things that residents and companies like can do to improve and protect Wintermere's lakes. First, please join us in the next community lake cleanup, that's something called the April Olave. Typically, it's on a Saturday. Um, he chose to be forthcoming, so watch for the video on that one. And second, there are a variety of best management practices, I just mentioned several of those. These are called V M Ps that residents can incorporate into their daily activities to reduce pollution and protect our lakes on weapons. A few of those examples are listed on the slide and more will be covered in detail in the monthly articles and social media posts that you see. And speaking of that, please feel free to like, follow, and share the environmental content that we provide. It's a great way to educate and inform neighbors and it also showcases what we do. Um, the town staff can get the analytics, terms of community data, and then also report that as part of our outreach and F P S permit, which is a requirement for us. And lastly, if you see something, say something, don't be afraid to ask. Um, most of the time residents don't realize that what they're doing in their yard or waterfront might be harmful to the lakes, but that's what we're here for is to help you. Um, I can't beat each other, understand and ask questions. We can take the proper steps to ensure that we have pollution prevention measures in place and that water quality and habitat and property value are protected. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, me. Appreciate that accent presentation. Council, any questions? Bring.
Yes. Like I said, the story got a lot, I haven't seen all the part that I'm actually, you guys are awesome. What's the rule? I've seen people personally, see people like I just know, underwater, we here and just. Hold short like that.
Yeah, you can't do that. Uh, so everybody who lives on a waterfront property, you're allowed, it's called an access corridor. Um, and there are state regulations and county regulations that apply to Wintermere. You have to follow whichever one is more strict. In this case, it's Orange County's. So you have a, I think it's thirty feet or thirty percent uh clear. And that's a linear coverage of your shoreline, the rest has to be vegetated with aquatic plants. So.
Or left.
Or left alone, correct, yeah. But but if you leave a shoreline alone, it will never be fair. We have to try to manage. So those who can see that are collecting beaches or or empty um shorelines, those are made active advantage. So most of the time when people move to the waterfront properties, they rinse themselves on the walls and so they say, oh yeah, you can come on with it. Um, so a lot of times, you know, it's really important to be an educational approach with the homeowner first, because they they don't know what they're doing this time for five.
Okay, but maybe I have to give you that, that's just sort of kind of their information.
Sure.
I deal.
Yes.
You know, they actually are really trying to be, I don't know about.
Yeah, I don't think they know, and the other issue is, I think, oh, there are a lot of contractors out there who start fly by night. And um they get paid to do the shoreline, and then they get paid to come back and fix the problem in the homeowner and get signed. So it's a double standard, that's tricky. Um, but yeah, doing it for the first time is always the best and uh. Most beneficial approach.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Council, next up on urban business, our our town council meeting minutes, February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. From the promotion. Which in that group, councilperson that, that and second councilperson. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing that, we can do anything councilperson needs.
I.
Hi. Uh, hi. The P D council. That's. Next up, uh, under urban business, we have some swearing in of self as well as two council members. Councilperson. Needs. Many others?
Yeah. I, James O'Brien.
I, James O'Brien.
Silently swear or affirm.
Silently swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the state of Florida.
Will obey the laws of the state of Florida.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
All respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter and the provisions of the charter and the ordinances of the town. And will faithfully discharge the duties of the mayor.
Will faithfully discharge the duties of the mayor. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Yeah, that's bad. I didn't know if I, if I already told you what it has. Couple of debates. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, the hands. Silently swear or affirm.
Sal, swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the state of Florida.
Will obey the law of the state of Florida.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects. Observe the provisions of the charter and the ordinances.
Provisions of the charter.
Charter and.
Head of.
Yes. Of this town of Wintermere. And will faithfully discharge the duties of councilor.
And will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge of the duties of council.
Thanks.
When it's nine, some of those. Randy?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Double top secret official. First, Williams wants to. Right though. Your words, you're right again.
Yeah, I agree. I'm Lauren, Lauren Andy Williams.
I have one, Andy Williams.
Sal, swear or affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the state of Florida. That I will in all respects. Observe the provisions of the charters.
Will. Serve the provisions of the charter.
And ordinances of the town. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the councilor.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the council. Congratulations. Again, now. I want to thank all of our council members, especially our new council member, councilperson needs, and councilperson ladies for their continued service. You're gonna present on these this evening? I consider.
Yes, we have a man of weight terms presenting on board.
Thanks. Sorry, man, I did not see. I was like.
Good evening, everybody. So, um, we have a three dummy cases tonight. Uh, the first of which is the wire replat. Uh, this is a request to uh replat essentially two lots. Ten nine O eight Down Park Lane, uh, and ten nine E Down Park Lane. Uh, those two lots would be recombined to produce three lots. Um, I think it's full to the. Uh, to page seventy two of P D. Okay. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, this is in the back, here shows uh the two lots in blue. Um, the top lot is uh ten nine O eight and the bottom is ten nine E. Uh, those are the two lots that would be uh uh replating to create three lots in the end. Uh, the next we. Shows the resulting three lots. Uh, the three lots that would be produced as a result of the minor replat are all compliant with the transcode in terms of the minimum lot size requirement as well as the minimum lot weight. Um, once uh or if the uh council approves this minor replat, then go to uh the town for signature and then you report it and that's the process from. And I'm gonna go for any question.
So, my only good question is, at one point. There was. It's been about five or six years ago, there was a little bit of different layout between four or five lots. Has that gone away in our total three lot because agreeing in the center?
Right, that's not okay. Um, there was a previous uh lot split right here. Um, resulting in the two lots that we see today. Uh, that was a previous lot split that occurred. This is the currently proposed lot recombination under this minor replat. But what you're referring to is that that proposal has not been laid in there and you.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, if there's any questions on this uh minor replat.
Just about, so there, on the plan, there's a area not part of this plaque, where where.
Yes, um, that that parcel or that property will stay exactly as configured, it's not part of the recombination. Um, that actually, that parcel that you see is sort of the top of the um configuration there. That um parcel was split uh as part of that lot, so that was referring to how we originally occurred, resulting in that lot and then the long um lot below it.
So the long lot below it, on three, this this diary, obviously goes out to the access roadway. I mean, all the wire there. The the plating of that uh. Obviously restricting access to the area, the top part of the plaque.
Okay, so that subsidy three lots would be from what was previously called Downwater. Uh, that is Downwater Park Lane. Uh that is now down Park Lane. Uh that access even if you see goes across uh the top of the the lots there. And then there's a small portion of that that comes down into the center. And then that center access point would be uh access from lot number three. Uh the that all is private access easement, but that is not a.
Just I find on on three, there's a lot of separately restricted access to the area, it's not platted. Could it turn restricted access to the lots to?
What they. Yeah, there's there's a use that comes um uh across the top, but then there's also a piece of that that comes down to the center. So.
Is the uh not part of this plaque lot? Is that a built a lot also?
They're all three built a lot. Or all that you're probably have the four pieces at the top, yes.
It's also buildable.
That's also. But it's not part of the uh minor replat that's proposed today.
Aye.
Uh that's not being configured. It's staying in its current dimensions.
And as this develops, uh I assume it's gonna have to have its own stormwater drainage requirements.
Uh correct. So each of these lots would be subject to the town's stormwater retention ordinance, which would require each lot to have its own one site stormwater retention plan. Um the town currently requires uh each lot to uh provide comfort. Competitor storage or lineage covering all over the developed state. That's not the town that town's uh stormwater retention ordinance, right? Um so they would each be required as they come in for development to provide that stormwater retention plan for the annual lot as it's filled.
Council, any additional questions? All right, council looking for motion to approve item Z twenty-four dash zero two, now our main minor replat. Motion, we should approve councilperson.
Aye.
Second, councilperson that, or I'm sorry, councilperson needs. Any further comments, questions, or concerns, council? Seeing none, we begin voting with councilperson three. Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Motion carries forward zero. Next up is uh item Z twenty-four dash zero five. This is ten nine ten based for dry. Variants will allow cover porch that is also maximum for area ratio of forty-two percent. Which you see the allow total maximum thirty-eight percent floor area.
For this one, uh uh directly to page one hundred of the topic. So uh this is a Disney residence. Uh right now, this is a residence that has a rear pool uh deck on that. There's also a cover porch on here that you can see in this photo. Uh it's on the right side there, side pools, yeah. Yeah, so that rear cover porch, the advocate is proposing to expand that cover porch area. So they'll be removing or what they're proposing to is to remove that rear cover porch that you see out the back along the right side. Remove that and replace it with a larger cover porch. Uh that increase to gross floor area would exceed the town's maximum gross floor area of thirty-eight percent. The lot area neighborhood and water elevation. Um and that expansion would only impact floor area ratio because the existing acres there are not expanding first. So they would be building on the existing. Uh so the variance request is to exceed the maximum of thirty-eight percent of the whole area neighborhood and water elevation. They would um be removing one hundred and seventy-seven square feet of the existing cover porch and replacing it with four hundred and twenty-nine square. Uh new cover porch. Then that increase would be two hundred and fifty-two square feet of new cover porch area. Cover porches are um covered by the town's land development code and the definition of gross floors. That's why it would be during the gross floor. So currently, the existing uh residence is uh has a. Floor area ratio of forty percent. It would be increasing to forty-two percent as a result of this cover porch.
Did TRB have any indication as to?
Well, this discussion at the DRB, uh there was a question uh made about the inclusion of the floor area and the application of gross floor area. Uh that was just us saying it was just that whether or not the deck on top of the uh cover porch area. Because the cover porch is proposing as a a deck area and the other story would not be counting for it because it's open to sky on lower area. I think that that was my only discussion uh regarding questions about this case.
Yeah, I think also probably the purpose of it.
Right.
Uh then, yeah. What was asked. So that's uh.
Still, yeah, maybe. Yeah, he did say that in the meeting. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns, council?
I mean, I I tend to be in agreement um with Mr. Withers at the RV because the need for the variance is supposed to be based on something unique to the lot. And as much, you know, I feel for people with medical concern, I don't think that that's really what the issues are that we're supposed to be basing our decision on. It should be based on uniqueness of the lot.
I don't have a problem with uh. If it's already very slurs, how does the movement get rid of it or something? I was like, one less than the other, I'm the same. As far as I'm changing code right now, I'm just asking, what's the?
So.
What's recent?
Yeah, so the uh the proposed cover porch addition doesn't affect the ISR. The ISR would stay the same. It would have no impact or increase to RSR because it's already an impervious area.
Um the impacts that the proposed uh addition would have would be to the floor area, which uh is combined with gross floor area under roof. Um and the town's code includes the area of cover porches in perfect definition of gross floor.
Is the advocate here?
But.
Would you like to be common?
Well, one thing I would ask you, there's really no environmental reason that a roof would cause more damage, so to speak, than already have been purchased property like. There's no, because I know a lot of times we want to be in the purpose property, because most of all, I still didn't say unproperty and all that, but. Um I get what I'm asking is the roof made it worse?
So so the roof in this case that in purpose would be the same, it's the same coverage on the property in terms of the area that's classified a surface or impervious surface. Um in this case, the the question is really just related to the gross floor area or area. It's it's the mass of the property is what you're about to gain over the board.
Understood. Thank you very much. So just for. We'll keep you up here.
Does does the property mean ISR?
The property means uh um ISR. It's combined with IS standard, yes, currently.
Yes.
See, because. I got it there. Great. So yeah, it doesn't look like. But.
Well, there's my question.
Exceed the FAR. I. The floor area ratio.
That's correct. It means the ISR, but it already exceeds the FAR.
With with the change, right? Not as it sits.
As of this currently, it already exceeds the FAR. Yeah, so the current floor area ratio is forty percent of the higher. It currently does its construction if they were to add a subdivision of forty-two.
And our limit is thirty-eight?
Our limit is thirty-eight, correct.
So we do, yeah. Thank you, Blackler. Um for um we we I love your for now again on. The request. I'm gonna give your name and address. We actually have it here. But we can get into it for the record. It makes it easier.
My name is Derek Law. You know, the property in my nine hundred and sixty right there. Um the primary reason, the reason we want to do this, one is it's gonna make the uh. The area that much nicer. Or entertaining more questions. My wife has lupus. Uh this is lupus. And we have a grandbaby now, including leather, and she go down here against sun at all. Um and so we have a cool bed and pool. The grandbaby want to be out there. She really can't participate in that. Um because it flares up and it's very significant. Um. Um now, you know, you know about this. So that's a primary reason for adding this. So she could be outside, it's an indoor outdoor area, and participate in that levels of that.
Any questions for the applicants? See, thank you. Appreciate you coming on. All right, council, that's Christian. Yeah.
This is legal. There's a rule on this residence or future law, and they all just.
No, please, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I'll give the motion to approve this. Motion to approve councilperson Williams. Second, second councilperson that. Council, any further discussion? Seeing none, begin voting with councilperson three.
Hi.
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 Thank you.
Your name's here is again, so. I get my ears shook. All right, uh three, one, councilperson needs to send. My surprise based on your comments, thanks. Next up is item Z twenty-five dash zero six, this is two one two west of Chatham. Variance to allow a dock with side setbacks less than sixteen feet and to allow a side setback of ten feet on the east side, ten feet. Eight feet on the west side. D R B recommended approval in condition that no more than six inches of roof hang overhang. Uh may extend past the end of the dock on the south and west sides.
Uh so this variance case, uh is really a a request for variance to a side setback. Uh the town standard is sixteen feet. Uh from the property line projected. Uh the advocate is proposing ten point eight feet from the west side property line projected and ten feet from the east side property line projected. Uh Orange County Higher Mental Protection uh Division has already issued a permit for the dock. Uh they issued that permit for setbacks of ten feet on each side. So the advocate, mother of the town's variance request. There's no classing ten point eight on the west and that. Um there's a Disney dock that's out there. The Disney dock sits at six feet from the west side property line projected. So that dock will be removed. Uh and replaced by the proposed dock at seven feet. With that, I'm going to be answering the question.
Council, any questions?
It looks like if we did do that, if we gave the person to ride in this, we would move their dock here, right?
Um.
Yeah. Okay, that's actually nice. We've done on both of them, yes.
Yeah, let's let's go to page eleven, twenty.
So this is the code that areas here. Type. In the U B.
There you are. Yeah, that is the proposed dock that's shown on the screen uh before you. So there's the ten point eight foot setback on the west property limitation and the ten point setback from the east. Uh when the DRB reviewed this variance case, they approved it. However, they approved it with a condition uh that the roof overhang be reduced to no more than six inches beyond the line of the deck on the west side and south side.
I think the concern on this particular item, I'm very familiar with this area, so. We. We approved a variance for that prior to this, a basic problem. That led to some questions about. Access and all of that. We probably, we we write into this variance to prove that. If the current storm structures there, there are there, and I can modify or change as far as.
Correct. We can have them assign a um full harmless against the sound relative to that. Uh either you draft that up, the the boat dock that's currently there is not friendly.
Correct.
Um so that's where the issues were because it's probably about a foot or two to the west of that dock. And this is six feet. That dock is six feet. This is going ten and eight, ten point eight from that property. So it seems to get more of a buffer, but um.
Right.
We can require that as far as variance.
I just, you know. Father, see, when we get a variance and then someone comes back and it's like, oh, now I want you to do this, you know, so I would like to avoid that and that's issue per se with the variance, so. Uh I just wanted to think that. I'm gonna be good, which is.
Yeah, there I that's something to add, but I don't know if we'd add it to variance or to an agreement. Um if if approved that the town makes me identify with any washout or infill because of our outflow right there. So five years down the road, it is. Quote, lift dock, penalty is filled in. It's not us.
Okay.
I think I moved a little bit too far away from that. We don't know, and we're slowly fully geared for that. Right. There's an answer to be the same on that side, right?
So we have like a culvert outfall, is that?
Correct. It's one of the first where everything poured poured in that direction, where there's the outfall right there.
Council, any additional comments or questions? Are you seeing none? Any promotions or group?
Motion to approve. Do we need to add all the other pieces, Roberts?
With the relation that they. Full or full harmless to them, but um relative to the stormwater.
Okay, hold. Motion to approve the variance with the addition of the in in. And do not take stand up for any washout or infill to the current outfall located adjacent to the progress.
You said it, so. Second, councilperson that. Council, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none?
Aye.
Hi.
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 All right, any other or confirmation on elements of. Next up is uh resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero one. This is the Form Six litigation that we discussed. We read this resolution. Discuss this. This is a resolution of the town council for the town of Windermere, Florida, authorizing the town's participation in litigation seeking a declaration of the provisions of subsection one one two. Point one four four. One D of Florida statute that require municipal elected officials, uh Form Six financial disclosure from the sun constitution and invalid, providing an effective date.
Mary, before we turn over, I have any questions or comments. I do have a statement from councilmember David, who's not here tonight. Uh if I may, counsel, my apologies for not being able to hear this evening. First, I'd like to congratulate Mayor O'Brien, councilperson Williams, and councilperson Hayes on their swearing in tonight. I want to lay a full support for the resolution twenty twenty-four dash O one, Form Six litigation. I think it is important. We try to protect our council in the future so that it won't prevent others from serving or running for town. I also want to voice my support for resolution twenty twenty-four dash O two as well.
Thank you, Robert. Council, any um questions after your reading and our previous discussion uh on this item? The council was here to answer any of the questions you make.
Just a clarification. So if we even have the council. Pass its regulation, there's no requirement for us to be able to file to all.
You know, there's two things you can do. If you adopt the resolution, the resolution allows the town to be added as a claim to the loss of the town. Then I have forms that the law firm prepared, which allow each one of the council members to have your names, unless if you elected, adopt this resolution. Have tonight if people that do that. Um or alternatively, if you don't adopt the resolution, each, a council member can join for the cost of two thousand dollars, and that cost will be paid by any which of the council.
Just a clarification. This Form Six has been around a while. All this was up till now, but what changed, I guess? Why are we doing it now as opposed to last year?
Why are we doing it now as opposed to last year?
Very good question. Um, I don't really know the answer. Supposedly for the past few years, this has been an issue that. The governor has thought important for all elected municipal officials to have to do. And up until this point, it never went, or up until the point in twenty twenty-three that elected, but it did, it did get high in twenty twenty-three.
Fire that issue again.
Prior to this, you would fill out Form One?
No, I mean, couldn't they, was it Form Six, either that?
Yes. Form Six, uh, for folks like the governor, um, the elected officials at the county level, um. Constitutional officers. Like sharing those topics.
So city council, all city councils exempt fired by the Congress?
All city councils had to fill out Form One. Which was a very limited decision.
And the ones that were Form Six previously, were they all paid? Because trust me.
I believe so.
I can't say a hundred percent on that, but.
I have a question.
Eight positions. Career type, not career type, but.
Right.
Yeah. The, the issue that comes up here in my perspective is I believe that some of this is being done to. To discourage people from buying the homes. And that, to me, is a threat to the way that we do business. We already see that we. We don't have elections particularly here. Um, because there, you know, it's a lot of work, a lot of time, there's no remuneration. It is time that we come and need to listen. Town, because we care about it, care about the future of our. For us to have to. You know, continue to give out additional information. Um, it's not easy to, to get all of that information. That's going to be costly for us. Some of us have businesses, some of us, um, you know. Some can, can consider it a threat that all that information's out there, so. At the end of the day. That while I'm a thousand percent sure that I'm here as anything to hide. Um, just the, just the going through all of that effort, it's just an additional burden. End of the day, the search for council. Um, it's already a difficult position. It's not a lot of time, uh, all the time. So, uh, but we love doing it because we care about our community and all of that.
Just, just for clarification, because I have a problem, really have a problem with my decision. To this point, most elected officials were filling out Form Six in, in the state of Florida. Most elected officials, would you say?
I don't know the percentage.
Yeah.
I think. Elected officials for cities, no, there was one more.
How many, how many, uh, is that going to be?
Seventy-seven?
Seventy, plus over a hundred constitutional officers. Or rather, elected officials, well, they. Mostly because it's more of a mass exit, it's getting the. Service.
On our own.
Yeah. I'm so sorry.
And on our own.
And that's already, that is, that was an excellent council vote for our community, so. Yeah, certainly, I mean, it is on a little bit. Listen, it's not the end of the world. We'll do whatever, but I think that it is. Just. Strikes me as. Another barrier to wanting to serve. You know, so you look back, when I look back in our history, almost everybody walk up and down the street. That person served as mayor, that person served as council. I can walk you down the street. And, you know, they didn't have to do it. Everybody did their part. I think that. Love for us to be able to get back to that, and I think that is, is just another. Barrier to achieve.
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I'm just, in my mind, I'm struggling with it because. I think that I expected from my county mayor and my city mayor and. Other elected officials. I am elected official also. Just since I'm talking. You know, I kind of tell them what else we can do and say, I'm trying to start with the idea that. If others elected officials kind of do, I wouldn't be elected official. And be like, I should. It's just, yeah, why did?
No, no, I, I believe there's a. There's a, there's a city. Do you need portion of this that feels that way? Um, but we did very well without this for many, many years. Yeah. Uh, I just.
Has this happened, asked me honestly, or is it the jury?
No, just the jury. Um, it is a, it is a shame. I really wish I just would have carved out the folks that were not being paid for.
Yeah.
Certainly, that's. We have to, we have to have a fair review of all this stuff.
I don't get it.
No.
I feel so.
What, what's that?
Yeah. I just be all, I just be all aside. I don't think I know, I think it's. As much as they'll be upset, as I'm, for me, it's, it's a, it's a six inch shot. You know, it's all my own hands.
Sure, I'm sure.
Whether or not, I say my county mayor, my. Whatever, even, I'm blessed to be now, but I say didn't do enough active elected officials. And that, that's a decision I haven't made with over a month.
I understand. And I don't think any government should have to disclose its private, private information at all.
We all get trained for ethics. We all know behavior is not, not accepted. What does financial disclosures have to do with any, uh, could be more.
Being, well, it's something they're going to ask for those records anyway, but, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's been taking a bribe. They're going to look into my records regardless.
Yeah, and I don't argue with one that I wish wasn't true also. But it is true. It is a law right now. You know, our change is. The town has to understand it's possible to work, I think that.
Right.
But in my, my, my thought would be this, and like I said, I don't want to engage in that. My thought is would it be my opposed to. Be, um, principal, or my opposed to it because of help on my own control. Government's slow. That's about all.
Yes.
And anyway, I can't, I, I, I do mind the fear too.
You know, we, just like tonight, we swear to follow the law, swear to uphold the constitution. So by signing onto this, it in no way changes our obligation or our duty to the law to complete the form. Sometimes there could be some legal actions that would stay on that or something like that, but until that happens. We are obligated to follow the law. I'm going to do it. Um, but it still doesn't mean that if we feel that it's not the right path forward, that we can't say, hey. We don't agree with this, but.
And where does it stop? It's a thousand this year. It's gonna be five hundred, two years from now, and it's thousand, you know? That you have to legal. Right, so that's the other part of this is. Incrimination. Where does it stop? Unless somebody pushes you back.
Exactly. You know, you, you see it from the federal, state, all levels of higher levels of government. Trying to influence local government affairs by these type of tactics. We need to push back.
Every time.
You don't have to do it separately.
Every, every time there's, setting more, we, we lose more and more, more ability. To. Legislate in our communities, what we think is important. We think the tree is important. Uh, every time is the same. We have, we have dirt streets. What's that? If they can't have dirt streets, you know, you have to do this, you have to do that, you have to have a subject, you can't have subjects, you know? It's, it's a slippery slope.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great point. And in the federal, when I was in the service, I controlled a lot more money than even our town budget. And did not fill out.
I did, did that on contract as a civilian employee of the federal government. I didn't have to plan anything. And none of them still did to this day. That's a large, large portion of the workforce.
But there is that, so.
Probably, Department of Tax.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I. I'll follow the law. The law also provides us with opportunities to remedy in the board. So we're asking if it was a million dollars to do it, we wouldn't be talking about it. But when I saw it was ten thousand dollars, I'm like. It's not going to change, but I think that's a word we need this.
Eric, what that means, so the, uh, make a motion to pass resolution for.
Motion maker, it's Councilperson Dan, any further second?
Aye.
Second, Councilperson Williams. Any further questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? See none? Again, voting, Councilperson, sir?
No.
Uh, aye.
Aye.
So resolution number twenty-four dash zero one carries, uh, three to one dissent, Councilperson. Next up, another resolution with an asterisk. It's a whole run there.
Well, yeah, but.
Now, I, I understand, we're.
I understand.
I have a lot of respect there, and I appreciate that.
It's a struggle.
Next up is resolution twenty-four dash zero two, revising the town's purchasing policies. Attachments are available and, and. And review. Resolution of the Town Council for the Town of Windermere, Florida, adopting revisions to the town's purchasing policies and procedures. Do you want to talk about this at all, Robert, or, like, you know, it's pretty clear in the packet, but?
Yeah, it's pretty clear in the packet, but, yeah. The purchase policies have not really been adopted or revised and amended since two thousand thirteen. Um, I think it might have been revised somewhat a little bit in two thousand fifteen. But those that change will be statutory changes, so if you want to enforce that, you have to order edits and also some, uh. Health planning items as far as the impressions.
Counsel, any questions?
Just real quick, so I see that there's additional, like, you're continuing.
We did have continuous contracts, but. I think it's making it to where it's identified in the purchase policies to where you can do the three years and one year, but nothing additional to that.
So that's. Should we, it's a three plus two more, you know, or?
It's.
Three and two.
That's required by the statute when, so God, however, he does our construction law, like, you're, when. With the construction law exceptions and the continuing contract falls as you defined it in. Your purchasing policy falls under the C C N A. The competitive consulting negotiation act. So he's defined it in there, and there are limitations on how long it should be under the statute.
Thanks. We're in my other pack. I thought we. I didn't know it was changing. There. Three year.
We did previously, but it wasn't in accordance with the statutes. So that's what I'm updating.
And it may have been under the statute to the amount of the contracts, so then it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been. So he's got that defined.
Okay. And if you do these, you know.
Who?
Save for that contract. Asterisk, please.
I'm just, I was. I was looking for potentially a longer term because the R F Q, R F Q process takes a lot of time. And three year plus two one year option, you're. To get a longer term, what you can apply better pricing. I think it's always best.
Yeah.
Just kidding. Counsel, any additional questions or comments on this item, resolution twenty-two four dash zero two? See none? Looking for a motion. And a motion to approve, uh, resolution. Motion makers, Councilperson Dan, for second. Second, Councilperson needs. Questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? See none? Again, voting, Councilperson needs.
Aye.
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 Here is order zero, resolution passes twenty-two four dash two. Next up, these are contracts that are written, six avenue and Butler Street, one, three, phase two. This is our subrecipient, subrecipient agreement. Or D R four three three seven, uh, and then four four nine dash A eight, go along. Um, Tony, are you?
Just like with West Second Avenue, we've been waiting for this subrecipient agreement. This is the final stage before they will release us to allow to start bidding on this project. It's really important that we approve this this evening and move this project along in their process. So staff is recommending that we approve this, just like we do with West Second Avenue. This is exactly the same agreement, so the subrecipient agreement just be after the West Second Avenue, and that was previously reviewed by the town attorney.
One's probably good as well. We can see what the delta is going to be between what we originally agreed to in twenty eighteen and what the costs are now. And that would give us the ability to go back to them and ask them for additional funds, hopefully bridge that gap.
So this leaves the phase one, move on to phase two. Uh, and this is the entryway to that, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, and just so counsel, where there are grant funds, there's also. Required as part of this. So, uh, any questions there?
As it stands right now, correct, yes, it's twenty-five version. But hopefully, we'll get more numbers back and hopefully be, um. Less of an overage on the town's part.
Started this, like, who knows? We'll see, yeah. All right, counsel, any additional questions for staff on this item?
Uh, yeah, it's been a long, long time since we've seen any strong of that. It's going to look like it's going to be much the same as it was last time we looked at it. How many years ago, that how did change, you know, what happened?
Yes, everybody's saying.
Would you approve, counsel? Would you approve, Councilperson Williams, second? Same Councilperson Dan. Questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? See none? Again, voting, Councilperson, sir?
Aye.
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 Here we go, on our way four to zero for the phase two of six avenues in Butler Street. Next up, quotes for temporary restrooms at town hall. I approve.
The town manager, the town manager has received a few, um, requests. I, I'm saying a few lightly about the fact that there's no restroom facilities here at the town square park area. This becomes an issue for those who are out playing basketball or soccer. Um, because town hall is generally locked during the day when it's not open for some type of event. So the town manager asked me to, um, obtain quotes for a portable restroom trailer. That is in your packet. I reached out and got both from three different companies. Um, so if we went with the lowest quote at a twelve month cost, that's forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars for twelve months to have that trailer out there. It includes the, them coming and doing some cleaning of that, and of course, having to clean it, clear it out, as we say, they have to come and do that. So, um, that's included in the cost. So we're presenting this to you today for your discussion and whether or not you would like to proceed. Right?
It's not, I have a need over there. They have those seventy tanks that come down, like, to the medicine center and they do the same type of thing, so. Like, what do you put in for them? Why do you have to go with seventy?
They have to come and pump these out once a week.
Yeah.
It's a fancy port-a-lit.
So how many, how many feet from, temperature less than water and? They pump up the gas. So I understand the need. And I'm.
All right, I don't.
Frustrated. So, okay, so I understand the need. I, I have a couple of things that we'll turn it out. On it. Or we put this in, it's put it in the wrong place. Better left. We can get past that. Um, you know, the other thoughts I have are me. Sure, we don't want to invest in something permanent.
That's what I said.
I don't know, or can we look at that before we, I mean, it's fifty, right?
Are you talking about permanent here or?
Perman- permanent, well. Permanent something, yes.
So.
I don't know.
That's why. The rehab cost is between fifteen to seventy thousand, depending on the size. And I said the same thing because I recently visited Gilford Park and they just had me one of those. And there's a lot of different styles that you can get. You can get them on the floor, the wall, siding, everything, you know? There's a lot of choices.
Sorry.
It's a no win situation because somebody's not going to want to look at anything, but I'd like, I think that personally, better than looking at a trailer in my front yard.
Remember?
So, remember I said it was?
Uh, so. I mean, if this is the way. That we have to go, we have to do something. And we're in a, we're in a bit of a predicament now, right, between, rather, between timing and readiness for us to commit to what we're going to do for the rehab of town hall and. Securing that funding and where we are in the world of bathrooms and, and I, I agree that the visibility of businesses in the high. Securing that funding and where we are in the world of bathrooms and and I I agree that the visibility of businesses, I have to pick up the bathrooms where. So, we're here, yeah, well, we got here, we're here. Um, all I'm gonna say is like, do we want to take a little more time, look at a few more options? Whether we want to purchase something like this, do you want to do? Uh, a a pre cap or whether we want to look at investing in those, investing in some bathrooms that are indestructible that we can leave open? And I I I'm hoping to guys that.
I agree, I I agree with you there, I mean, this is a twelve month rental cost, it's forty two for, there's no way with the design, construction, the final product in a twelve month period, so. Don't know that, or at least it's pushing up to eighteen months. I think for, you know, sixty five thousand dollars, you can get a more appropriate solution that's a purchase versus a lease.
And I'm happy.
This is just for.
I had the same conversation with Robert yesterday and asked, you know, like even when, if if say it takes two years to design or for signing for town hall, whatever else. Then you're two years in and you're at eighty some thousand dollars for a trailer that looks a little sketchy, but for two, I call it. Whereas if you have a pre cap, I mean, like she said, it needs to be marked, but it is something, it's a pre cap, well, if we're done with it and we have our final plan here at town hall, then we can even sell off a pre cap. Or move it to another location, which is another game works, yes. Cause I I I heard a lot of people talk about playing around with, getting bathrooms, I mean, I drive my daughter to those fire now from Central Park, cause there's nowhere to.
So it's.
So the pre questions and the pre caps, yeah, we've talked all, we've come to a decision.
They were, so the subject, I had Robert check on this too, so the subject for town hall is where we want to put all the bricks. The subject for the community buildings is over here, kind of back by the dumpster and that's what the town temporary facilities were tied into. So we would tie it into the existing subject, the water, all of the things are already there because we found out these were offices as well as the community building already utilized all the water sewer.
They're really too tiny to use for seven things here, but they will rely on the department anyway. The subjects are here.
Probably the easiest time to do one, so we put the water and the electricity because of the time.
Or I would put free, free trial on location where the control.
Be located. I'm I'm more inclined to metaphor or something, something that's a pre. Certainly a lot of the time, those, um, we're proud of a long meeting, that, just even ones that look like tanks and you can go around.
What events, what events do we have still for this?
We have food trucks, uh, the Robbie Jermyn oil is in yet, uh, town hall or town, which doesn't count. Um, over the summer, it's pretty quiet because we're in the way of the food trucks through June, July and August again. Uh, but in September, we started wrapping up with a lot of events.
Yeah, for sure. I want to, I want to do. I think that I would like to. Get a couple of other options that would be good. Option. I mean, the issue is. I just feel like no matter what you do, this is gonna be, this, where is this everything, right?
I mean, town avenues offices are clear around the edge, right?
What was that?
The town, the temporary town avenue offices first, and they were still tied into them.
Yeah, yeah, you could tie in probably anywhere within reason there. The the problem is you can't tie things into the subject because you operate that way. So you need a real, there.
Oh, right.
Yeah. This is like, right, on the other time. I I think that. Maybe this is the solution, I sure would. I I just. There, I mean, we might as well just get three fortifieds. And weekly, I've had a tenant, um, that is Jared and they run a storage space for me. No power, no water, it's just storage, but they have a full time fortified, it's that, doesn't get used, but when they have, when they need it, the man completely gets it fixed there.
I think town halls where that would be.
But, I mean. And this doesn't cover any of this, I mean, you have, you're still getting fortifieds for everyone working, so this doesn't fix anything, but if people they were using the park a place to go, it wouldn't happen. When we have, um. At the parking area, we, we get our rest to that.
No, they they use on.
The walker bed.
Yes.
What what is the preferred cost for?
Three hundred and ten dollars.
Correct.
For a big truck, right?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
That's for two stalls and a.
And for things like our pet fest, I think she sent a thousand dollars to ship it to, or probably especially those that are budgeted. And then do we have them to run along the lakes and?
Yes, yeah.
So those folks are, you know, those, you know, we are, that's still, still, uh, and again, all I'm saying is, I think for, I'm positive that we find a solution. I'm just not certain this is. Um, I know these, we're going to be, uh, using lots and, you know, see lots of these. Have disasters and stuff like that, they're, they're super nice, uh. For a while, they're good for a week. Actually.
Good man.
Right, not permanent.
Three hundred and thirty. Kind of good, like. True, this town comes to figure it out, the only thing I do when I'm when I'm getting it off. Council, you know, this. But, um, they agree. So, yeah, I think I, I mean, personally, I would request that to do this, with a couple of more options, just a major remaining branches. Yeah, council, you have a quarter body, you have a library for next two months. Now that it be out once a week, if you have a. For a line table, I mean, I don't think, yeah, you're not, so table only this, I think tables, if we, if we need some outlets, it's, yeah. But I, I'd like to work on a better speaking than that, I just not convinced. And. Yeah, like, what, what, totally didn't we need that? Right, so, yeah. The, uh, the brand, and again, this is.
The pre cap, I was saying, it's all up the.
That's gonna be a problem, but it's might not fit in where it may, but I mean, I didn't say this, um, it'd be. Discussion, we're gonna have to have it, I agree. So, um, so, thank you guys.
So, in, in all the same line there, uh, media discussion, we should, or media discussion on building the bathroom, what maybe not to do with total renovation down hall, I think it's gonna be a big part of their renovations. We rebuild it before the renovation happens, if this is, you know, you know, what's.
Yeah.
Well, if you know the bathroom, then it'd be plenty there, the sun, the bathroom may be there, then maybe we start with that and then they will run the package.
But that are funny part here, it's a funny part of the rehab of town hall, I already knew that we have town hall to more critical.
Yeah, oh, well, it's, it's, because if you have your bathroom, it's a little more critical than that. Not a lot of has, a lot of people, seriously, that is happening, so. Not, but you, you think we're gonna be part of, and that's the, or we, or we, you know, it's happening. So. Hey, I was gonna say, I don't think we should actually do it for with the battery destruction.
I don't think it is.
That they hold up, yeah.
I I just feel, I mean, I think it's a little difficult to have solid conversations on that, it'll be, I know what we're talking about, so maybe, you know. If you like to, it's mocking some bad. You, you be the. All right. I, I want, I want to say, I have to, it was one of these, so we can just get a couple, three, four, like, just look at her.
So I'm looking at, with the, here, where these coffee, the, the bathroom, usually, we're gonna do the same subject, so they're theirs, we're going about.
I mean, I need to be in the same, so I think it would be wise to have it in the same subject system, we may want to, they think pretty good right over there. Just depends like how man's capable, whatever, and so, yeah, that.
Probably, yeah, probably, it's, it's small enough, we can move it all over the place. And most, I mean, you can bump up the height to, to there, so.
For the three stalls, like eight, five, twelve feet-ish, or come on a three cap housing, different sizes depending on who wants to have the bathrooms. You know, what you want.
We could put all the. So, we all get included, you know, just be, not have, the devil try to get more, such nice stuff. Just send me ideas.
No, no, no. No, no. Yeah, dude, yeah, send, send us, cause any of these is a compliment.
So, yeah, and listen, I mean, again, so let's not be bad, they're, they're, they're said it that way, but I do think, like. You're good with building and all of that, yeah, um, so you can help us with that and, but the other piece of this is, I think if we got a little bit of information on that, so we can make some better decisions about what we may want to do here in terms of what our options are. And I know it's, uh. You know, this is all our immediate. Really, if we rush this, we're gonna. So, and say that, I mean, say ten years, let's, let's just get a little bit of information as much as we can have an idea of what we're really talking about. And what our options may be. Uh, seeing those, well, I've seen the pre cap lines, and maybe we want to settle for permanent. It's a difficult situation because we've been kind of placed in this. It demands, it just makes it a little more challenging, but I know that, I feel like this is not it. Just, they were, uh, you know, on that, I don't know, we're gonna do, yeah, it's, right, it's taking the call of duty, there's somebody out there that's calling duty. That's is all they do, they make millions of dollars. All right. So, I don't know, I've been, please. We'll go right to, uh, Aaron and council. Can you just, you mentioned that, uh, we're coming up on Robbie Jermyn's end of watch and your anniversary. You know, a lot of us. So, we're here and then heard and certainly, uh, something that, um, we've got some plans to. Honor Robbie and his family, people discuss that, I think that, uh, council person, that is, to speak at it. Um, but I just want everyone to be mindful and be, being, uh, not only Robbie and his family, but all of our first responders, all of our police department, because it's something that's really your personal touch here. Some of those, I believe it's been ten years. Um, I know that also, we can talk, I don't know just how you feel about this, but I heard some folks talking about maybe bringing the rubers back a little bit, the objection to that.
No objection.
Just on your mailbox, just to, I know the officers, they can, they can about them and things, but. That's all I have.
Yes. Um, store preservation board met on the floor, uh, discussed, uh. Building a charter and building bylaw, I'm not yet, that suggested we get into the, I think, group together that have flushed that out for the historic preservation board, that's. In addition, uh, was entered is, uh, the discharge and getting a historic building inspection program going so we can keep all of the historic buildings, uh. To top shape, we're gonna start with, uh, how all we're building, it's a house, obviously, we definitely got the word, we're headed here at town hall.
Are you seeing question? As well, have fun. Thanks for the meetings.
Um, uh, I was not able to attend the last one of Jane Blais' advisory board meeting, and this second one is during spring break, so I will be. So if there's anyone who wants to come, that is next Sunday at five here at town hall. We're either talking about Lake line? I wasn't able to find where that is, so I'm not actually sure. Um, but it is Harvey Harper, who's leading, speaking, um, and he has done some of our, um, reports from things around town, right, on the alcohol, I believe, and. A spurs or oozers, um, and a couple of other ones, so he's pretty knowledgeable on all the lakes in here and, um, fish and wildlife and orange company, maybe you. Use a lot of the time, so he would be a good person to hear if someone wants to maybe attend, I'm not able to. Um, the, uh, school, I'm going to try and set up a meeting, uh, to speak with the chief because I've been getting, um. A lot of residents very confused, um, either parents or residents about what's going on with like the traffic circles. And I guess yesterday there were some changes, um, that people were holding, either the turn lane and the principal maybe changes release times at the school, so there's a lot of mind on there. Kind of having a meeting with you, this just came up today. Um, and then the other thing is, is I had spoken for a while about, because I had some people asking about the old schoolhouse and some stuff that was being stored over there, but it looks like some, I saw them parking over there this morning, it looks like some of that has been. Getting cleared out, so it was looking good, so like, people bring forward on that. Not sure what the stuff is over there, but I did see it getting. Sit for me.
Three, four, seven, another record, I'd be for.
Well, you missed today, it was two and a half today. Yeah, two and a half. Two and a half.
Two and a half. We're on the big part with four and.
Four, four. Well, that was a strategic landing.
It was all there. I don't say, we, I was counting, I'm so gonna pull this, but anyway, it was well worth it, I won't say it might, I want it to be shorter, but, uh, it needed to be done, a few more has been in, uh. Pretty chaotic the last few years, and now it's other building leadership specifically, uh, is there. And she organized, then she and I are consulted, and we ended with eight hour class basically on. You know, having, having for, staying, and it's been well over a while, so I think you're starting to see a lot of positive change in that direction. And I do, they have a lot of ideas and they are a very passionate group, which I do appreciate that. But they do this, passion's not very effective at all, in a direction, so it was, the first of our words, I can't even imagine it, I have to do math. And they got exposed, they got exposed in very knowledgeable minds, it's on three words that I put on, actually, instead of one guy, so I think this is a good thing. Three lines of revision on you. Yeah.
No, no, I just think it's, it's gonna be really helpful to them, they are passionate and helping to have a strategic plan, which gives them direction, which then ties to a budget and and programs that they can support as a tree board and performance metrics for the work that they're doing is critical. So this is how this will help them moving forward.
We can get two more performance metrics and get that going together, I'm so very proud of all of you, but appreciate it, thank you guys, see you.
The first session is four hours.
What time you meeting there? They sure. Yeah, it's early, do you.
Well, she did provide, like, tightly provided.
Okay, we're gonna move the stat before we turn this into a four hour. Right, time's up. Thank you, um, ladies on assignments, the town manager evaluations and annexations on the block, that will all be discussed at the people meeting. Uh, the talking meeting is this afternoon, unfortunately, this year, we didn't see the need for.
Uh, the project meeting is this Saturday afternoon, unfortunately, this year we're going to see the appropriations in the state. Uh, they're making a lot of cuts as far as booze getting one. Uh, the meeting report, I'm hoping to have that in front of you, either in April or May, depends on when we get all the final numbers in, so I can do some accurate figures. Um, we've been working on the updated project policy, we're having a meeting on Monday, and we talked about the escalation of the numbers that we use in twenty eighteen, not only for. Uh, the Asian D P grants, but also for should the appropriations ever received. Um, we're not getting a lot of projects in the online, it's exhausting, so we're trying to figure out how we can try to get more funds. Or if we're gonna have to exclude some projects for a little bit of a delay, so we make sure that it isn't affordable. Now, we're gonna vaccine, we'll do the meeting report, and also they're doing board committee training, uh, the term of partner creation, rented for H P D, and also for tree board. Sort of the sunshine law, whole records, uh, and pretty much town policies and machines as well. So they're setting especially this to that.
Very good, yeah, more, more education than everybody has, I think that. More, you're able to, and any mistakes or issues.
Okay, so in public works, we've been really, really busy the last few weeks, one of the things that we do at this time of year is we start looking at all of our irrigation systems and timers. Because the warmer weather's coming, so we're gonna be monitoring, repairing and programming those controllers to get ready for that. We've had to make some, um, irrigation repairs at the parking lot over here at Fifth. Um, we converted the citrus grove to, from drip to rotor heads, um, for more direct watering, and that seems to be doing well. Um, the oak trees at Palmer Park were relocated, and we had to get irrigation to that, it wasn't doing well on the spot that was, it was at, so tree board wanted that moved. Um, and then the new tree for Arbor Day, we were able to tie into some water over by Forest and, Forest and Fifth, and actually we're irrigating that tree now, so that's helpful instead of having to hand water it. The playground at Palmer, we had to remove old equipment there to get it ready for the new equipment. Once the new equipment was installed, my team had to go back and replace the dirt around the, um, the foundations for that new equipment, once the concrete set, so we completed that. Um, we had to install some dead end signs at South Lake Butler and Bay Shore Drive, cause residents were concerned that people were not understanding there was a dead end there. So we worked with Mike Woodward on what the best sign size and location would be for that, so we've installed two at those locations. We lowered the shrubs here at the three roundabouts because of visibility clearance, they were getting a little high for that, so at all three roundabouts, we were able to bring the hedges down a little bit. We've been doing some pat coal, pot coal patching at Sixth and West Second, and then at that third near the church. We got some new coal patch material, because I was finding that my team was having to go out. Too consistently to try to replace the pat, the coal patch, and so we've got some new stuff that's holding up a lot better, so we're happy about that. And what I did is I got them, um, a stockpile of that, so that they don't have to keep running to Home Depot or Lowe's every time they wanna do that, so that's more efficient, effective for them now. We're continuing to monitor resident irrigation, because we're having quite a bit of runoff from residential irrigation systems into our roadways. That's causing erosion, washouts and ponding throughout the town, so. Anytime we're noting that, we have some door hangers that we're providing to them to get them to fix those situations for us. Ongoing road grading, um, we've added, um, some more material of our, our new dirt road material over at Tenth and for ponding, and that's the paper base. That we've been using now consistently. And we had to cover some roots at Thirteenth, so we, you know, we've been consistently getting out on the roads. Um, it's heavy leaf falling season, so our guys also have to help out with clearing leaves, um, and all of that, so you'll see them out at the roundabouts and areas where those are collecting. In the drainage structures, getting the leaves from those. Monitor sidewalks at the ped bridge, because that area is where the kids walk to school. And it tends to get covered in dirt, and so we have to go clear that, so we're doing that every week, monitoring that every week. We're adding fencing at Pocket Park and Fernwood, trimming trees at Fernwood. Palmer Park and Central Park had a complete tree trimming and, um. Maintenance routine that tree board asked us to do at both of those parks, so that got done in the last couple of weeks. We're continuing with event support, we had to replace G F I outlets here at Town Square that, that got burned out, so we've been doing that. Um, Lake Bessie Pocket Park and Wind mirror Rec had split, split rail fencing that had to be repaired and replaced. Um, we've been treating the Island Pavilion at Wind mirror Recreation, we made sure that that, that the termite folks came up, took a look at that and treated that, that's the one that was done by the Boy Scouts, I think. Um, all of our pavilions and our structures are on a termite treatment process. Um, fire rate treatments were done at Wind mirror Recreation Task Courts and throughout the park, we get complaints about ants at the, at that park. Repaired the flush valves at the restroom, so the restrooms are getting heavy use down at Wind mirror Rec, and we keep having to repair those, those toilet flush, um, valves. And then soap dispensers are getting pretty beat up too, so we're replacing those, and then of course, we just mentioned the strategic session for tree board. Um, they'll have another session coming up, their, their second session, and then we're working on one for H P D. And that's also four hours, Tom, that second one. We're getting what we paid for, okay?
And you want to stop through here.
Oh, yes, yes, sir, you're welcome, and we added, oh, we added a soccer goal, I would like to give kudos to the town manager who noticed there was only one there, and he asked me to get a second one, so, it's coming.
Question, um, the light host said, yes, has dude replaced the guy? One of the, the, we took out.
I don't think they have, but I'll, I'll contact them tomorrow and see.
It's, it's, it's well needed there, it's so dark, and there's a crosswalk right there that doesn't have a flasher.
I will attempt to light a fire over there.
Alright.
Um, I have a question about the, um, the termite treatment at the Island Pavilion, so. My husband and I saw that, cause we were gonna maybe rent the location, but anyways, um. It does seem like it's severe there, so are we gonna have anybody come out and make sure that it's structurally sound, besides just like a termite guy, because. It is bleeding and it's very spongy, and the one beam, um, that is facing, I guess, the west is sagging.
Yes, my team, my team is working on that. Yep.
Could you check when you get the, the pedestrian light ups, one of them, I think. Was there a second, one side does not work in the other day, I don't know if it is. Your solar, so I don't know if it was a battery issue, or maybe it wasn't, I'm not sure, we've been to be reliable, so. Uh, there is definitely one that is not working, so. Yeah.
Main Street at Second? Is that what you said?
It's, it's, yeah, right around over there, right by the text, so it's shopping.
Okay, I know we checked on one at Sixth today.
Um, and, and thank you for your team doing that, how you guys are out there, and yes, the sprinklers, if you see. Pockets in our new roads, and you guys have been working on so hard on the. Rumble Strix, that's from, we're doing that to ourselves, that's in our sprinklers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We did, trying to do a favor, but it's not.
Yeah.
Councilor.
Alright, I just have two, two quick things. Um, one is that I did learn from, uh, Nick in summary, that there are continuing issues raised by the Boathouse Tenants Attorneys. And so they might be reaching out to Robert for a continuance, so I just want to let everyone know that, um, so we can investigate what has been. And if you have any questions, please let me know, or you can talk right after today, so. And then the other thing is, um, session ended last Friday. So if there's a lot of conflict with the tree board meeting or the H P meeting, then we have. You'll always need a visitation, um, for April second, we have, um, at our firm, a legislative panel update, which is only half, and it is very entertaining. And it is really good, and if you can't make that next, um, at the next house meeting, I'll have a summary of everything that's important, now, we'll see what the, what's been signed, but, um. And that's it.
You David? And Tom, my prediction is that, uh. It can probably be the, the four hour timing, if you're on the back of workshop, that's been out, and have you run that down?
Sure.
And we've forged it down, so thank you guys for coming to the work ceremony, all of us, and out of that, um, we got solid, you know, I'm out, and thanks for, uh, taking off for the great job of our talent, so. For a couple of weeks, uh, did a great job there, and they arrested a voter suspect, and if anybody has any questions. About the vehicles, just get them invited afterwards, so we are, we are very actively working spaces there, um, maybe probably a little surprised to see how, but that's about it till then. Uh, two thousand forty fan report has been out, March twenty second, here's our food truck, but it's also going to be, uh, Robbie Germain's, it is actually, it is actually his anniversary, so seventy three now. We'll get something out on the way, go get a safety lockout, I think, we can also, uh, visitation. That'll go out, it'll be set in, it's a very, very long, uh, townhouse members, employees, and the panel members also came by, it's something to be afterwards for. You know, some gift like drinks and, um, refreshments for the fan, for part of the name. Um, twenty first, may everyone in town, Ross Conklin, the Chiefs, and Sheriff Hawking, so I've done, uh, hit that up, so if you're there, if you can stop by and say hi to everybody.
That march.
Yeah, this, um, next week, we'll get them, next week. Um, so, and, and so on, on your calendar, December sixteenth at eighteen, two thousand twenty five. Is our second accreditation. So we already scheduled that in the last, uh, week, and Monday, one new officer will be starting, also council to get an officer in two weeks. So she comes off, bringing a new officer on, he's got a lot of experience, also, I think he was still time in the military for some time, he was a school teacher, he's a boy. He's still an active, he's a resident, um, so we're, we're, we're excited to bring him aboard.
Make sure you cook your food on better, and you're. Definitely a little more flexible, so that's.
Have to move around a little bit, you're in two pounds right now.
And Robert, I want to thank you, I know that, um, they were probably just wanting to get any appropriations from legislature this year, but. The, uh, last year, we, we did very, very well, so a lot of projects offered, and those ones are good. Uh, bill will make those things happen, so, yes, politics, you know. If there's nothing else for the group that you work, you know, the German, it's seven forty, you know.